Hello, my name is Brian O'Connor. I'm the chairman of the Stratford Planning Commission. Today is February 21st, 2023. It is now 6:00 PM and I call the meeting to order. The Stratford Planning Commission is now open for a public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Regular members present at this meeting are Mr. Aurelia, Mr. Boyd, Mr. Vacola, Ms. Graham, and our alternate member, Ms. Morse. Please note for the record that alternate Ms. Morse is sitting in place of regular member Ms. Graham for the continued public hearing portion of the agenda. Ms. Morse sat as an alternate for this petition in January in Ms. Graham's absence. I'd also like to welcome Samantha Etara, town planner, and Aileen Marsh, our recording secretary. We are also joined by the town attorney, Pat Sullivan. Before calling this, before calling the first petition, I'd like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us that it is the policy of the commission to have questions of the petitioner directed through the chairman. The chair reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical For the record, in accordance with state statutes, tonight's petition was advertised on the Town Planning and Zoning webpage in the town clerk's office. The petition was also advertised in the Connecticut Post on January 6th and January 12th. The continuation of this public hearing was also publicly announced at the last Planning Commission meeting on January 17th, 2023, here in the council chambers. I will now advise the town planner to read the first petition.
Thank you, Chairman. The first order of business is the public hearing on 500 Peters Lane. This is petition of JR B Holding Company LLC seeking a four lot subdivision with lot sizes ranging from 44,456 square feet to 265,572 square feet in an RS1 zone. The fourth lot will be deeded as open space to the town of Stratford.
I will now ask the petitioner to announce your name and address. Also, if you have the certificates of mailing to the abutters, please.
I already did that.
Oh, I apologize. You did on the last one.
Yeah, this is a continuation.
Yep.
For the record, I'm attorney Steve Bellis with the Pellegrino Law Firm, and I represent the applicant. As you may recall, we had a presentation for a three lot subdivision with three single-family homes, and as the town planner stated, the fourth lot was for open space. That's going to be deeded to the town of Stratford. We didn't vote on that subdivision application because we wanted to get a referral to the town council. We've now done that, so that really is why we're back here. For that, for that aspect, there's others, right? The erosion, yeah. But I'll address that when she reads it.
Thank you. I'll now ask the town planner to summarize her staff report.
Thank you. So, last time we closed the meeting and the public hearing by requesting the attorney, the applicant, to actually reach out to the town council for an 8-24 review of the open space parcel that will be deeded to the town. Because according to state statute, 8-24 on municipal improvements, any parcel that is going to be acquired by the town or sold by the town should be subject to a review of the town council. And the planning, it typically gets referred to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission gives a recommendation, and the town council would then decide whether to accept or not that particular application. And then, so like attorney Bellis has said, they have initiated that process. They referred it to town council, and the town council formally referred it to the Planning Commission, and that matter is subject of our administrative agenda tonight. And they're also, they also submitted a soil erosion and sediment control plan and an application, which is also subject to an administrative review by the Planning Commission. The applicant had some outstanding items, such as submitting an A2 survey, which they did. I think they still haven't submitted the revised subdivision map that would state, I mean, retitle Lot 3 on the map, which is now indicated as Lot 2. But you may choose to place this as a condition of your approval, so that, you know, when they file the MILR, we have the correct lot numbers. And there is also another item that was requested of them, which is to, you know, work with the conservation superintendent on the permits that may be required for any street trees that will be removed or planted. But after further discussion with the conservation superintendent, it is my understanding that sometimes, you know, applicants seek subdivision approvals, but then, you know, they sell the lots to someone else, and they start developing those lots. So I think it is, if this is placed as a condition of approval, that will catch the attention of the zoning enforcement officer when the permitting will be issued, and then they will make sure that the street trees are replanted or, you know, removed according to the plan that is outlined by the conservation superintendent at that time. And then there is also a trail depicted on Lot 3, which the applicant proposed to move to the easternmost corner of the site, which is also a subject of review by the Planning Commission for an 8-24, you know, compliance. And tonight, I think you have to give, you know, formal recommendation on that also, whether, you know, you are agreeable with that trail to be located on Lot 4, in the location that is shown on the proposed subdivision map. There is also a requirement, according to state statutes, that any subdivision proposed would be required to also adhere to the bonding requirements, which is stated in our subdivision regulations. So the applicant must post a subdivision bond for, you know, improvements such as drainage, erosion, and sediment control, and a sidewalk bond, which will be determined by the town engineer after the final approval of the site plan or the subdivision map. And that must be placed as a condition of approval. We, I suggested in my staff comments that the commission should seek an opinion of the town's sanitarian. And regarding the adequacy of the subsurface septic system, she responded back saying that, you know, there is adequate capacity, so that is been met. And lastly, there are several conditions placed in the wetlands approval permit dated December 21st, 2022, which must be met, and I think it'll be, you know, good to reiterate them in your, you know, final approval too, in case you choose to provide an approval tonight, so that, you know, it doesn't miss the attention of the zoning enforcement officer, conservation superintendent, the building official, all those who are responsible for signing off on the permits when development is proposed on these lots. So having said that, I think in general, the proposed application is consistent with the town plan of conservation and development. The proposed use for the three lots, which is single-family homes on 40,000 acre, 40,000 square foot lots or more, is compliant with an RS1 zone standard in which they're located. And the removal of existing trail was conflicting earlier, but now, since the applicant has agreed to relocate that to the open space lot, I think that is consistent to the objectives of the Open Space and Recreation Chapter in the POCD. And I have outlined those objectives in my staff report, which is to develop an interconnected network of trails, to ensure that all residents have access to parks and open space, and to use parks and open space, including beaches, forest trails, and marshes as tourist draws. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that in-depth report. At this time, do any of the commissioners have any questions for the petitioner, the town planner, or our town attorney?
Paul Aurelia, I have one for the planner. Everything you just talked about is outlined in your staff report. Okay, thank you.
William Boyd, I have one question for the town planner.
You said Lot 3 has to be renamed?
Yes.
Still on the map, it still says 1, 2, and 3. What would it be renamed as?
So, it was Lot 2 on the map, so it would be renamed Lot 3.
But, but...
Earlier, it was Lot 2, and then they have corrected it, so I'm sorry.
So it is correct, being 1, 2, and 3?
Yes.
And the pathway is, that is the...
Move from here to this one. See how it says, proposed lot, proposed trail.
Oh, what is that?
The water.
Oh, that's the word. Okay, so, okay, we're good now.
Yes.
So it is 1, 2, and 3.
So that is good, yeah.
And what you're saying is, whatever you, we approve, someone can't sell Lot 3 and redevelop that different than the original plan for 1, 2, and 3?
No.
Is that what you were saying?
No. I said that, let me back up. I said that when the applicant is applying for subdivision, it doesn't necessarily mean that they would redevelop these lots.
Got you.
It just may mean that they would seek an approval and then sell the lots with the approvals. Approvals hold good for the lots on the map, that is filed with the town clerk. So they can sell it to individual developers or property owners or whoever it is, and they can develop those lots, but they only have to adhere to what is in the map.
I understand.
So even if the applicant doesn't work with the conservation superintendent right now on the street trees, if we place, if the Planning Commission places a condition that whoever develops these lots should work with the conservation superintendent on the street trees that are going to be removed, then, you know, if, for example, some resident wants to develop it, he goes and buys the lot, he will look at the conditions on the map and says, okay, I have to follow this.
And that's already baked in, is it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions at this time? I will now ask members of the public to comment in favor or opposition to the petition. I will also allow general comments and observations from those who are neither in favor or in opposition to the petition. Each member of the public will provide, will be provided three minutes to make their arguments. If someone wishes to speak again, you will be given a chance after everyone who signed up gets the chance to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the subject petition?
74. Ellen Schirbachary, 365 Peters Lane. So if they do sell to another contractor, can they build condos on the land?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? Not a four in favor?
Merrill Pruitt, 575 Peters Lane, Stratford, Concerned Citizens Group. I felt like maybe I should just say for the record, the effort that has been put forward on the town and by the town people and all of you, giving your time and effort on this settlement, it's, it's a good settlement. I'd like to see it happen, go forward with all the restrictions that the town planner has also outlined. And I like the idea that it is somewhat need-restricted in terms of them possibly selling it off, and then we have to start all over again. Many of you know, this has been a long, arduous, and costly battle for everyone. And so again, thank you for coming forward and looking at this so, so much in detail and making sure that we are doing the best for the community, the forests, the wetlands, the community in all of Stratford, the whole town, not just the North End. So thank you.
Thank you for your time. Seeing no one else would like to speak, I will now, excuse me, I will now conclude the public hearing portion of this meeting. I'm looking for a motion from the commission to table this petition. We will discuss the petition among the commissioners as part of this month's agenda.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion to table the petition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. With that, we move to the next order of business on the agenda, which is the administrative session. May I have a motion to open the administrative, administrative session and the balance of the Planning Commission agenda?
William Boyd, motion to open.
Paul Aurelia, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I am now looking for a motion to take the petition regarding JR B Holding Co., located at 500 Peters Lane subdivision off the table, and open this agenda item for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make that motion.
Second, Alec Vacola.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Chairman, I think in the order of, you know, I know this is a little out of order, maybe you have to vote on the agenda to take it out of order, but I think it would be best for you to actually go with the 8-24 review first, and the erosion and sediment control plan, and then come back to the subdivision vote, because the subdivision vote is subject to the 8-24 recommendation of whether, you can do the other way too, because the final vote...
Now that we've taken it off the table, can we move forward? And with, with the, you know, with the notion that, you know, as long as the 8-24 passes?
Yes, and even that 8-24 is subject to council approval, so you're only providing a recommendation tonight.
Does everybody on the commission understand what we're talking about? Yeah, you're following along? So we're gonna move, because we took it off the table, we're gonna move forward with the petition, but you also have to, if, whether, if we do move forward, you have to make contingent that the 8-24 is approved as well.
We're doing the...
We're on the petition still. We're at the top. So moving right along, this is the discussion part of the petition. Does anybody have any questions, comments? We have the petitioner here, we have the town planner, we already went through some of the questions, but is there anything further? Understood. With that being said, does any, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'm sorry, I do have one question.
Sure.
I know this sounds repetitive, but the 500 Peters Lane petition, it says, seeking a four lot subdivision.
That's correct.
But 3, is the fourth is the town.
That's correct. So just to re-explain it, it's a four lot, three of them would be, you know, made as single-family units.
Right.
And then the fourth would be a 3.67 acre piece of parcel of land that would be deeded to the town of Stratford as open space as a part of Roosevelt Forest, and also going along with that would be the access point, which their path to get into that area.
Right, but how it reads, it lends you to think that it's for lots, for houses. You don't assume that one is not buildable.
It's one, the, the whole lot itself is about 10 acres.
Correct.
And it's subdivided to, this is a subdivision, so it's divided into four lots, three of which would be single-family residences, and the fourth would be a 3.6 acre parcel of land deeded to the town.
Right.
Which is the part subjected to the 8-24.
I understand.
Oh.
I'm just saying, I understand that, but it doesn't read that. If I was reading it, I would...
But it is, it's four lots.
It's four.
It doesn't say houses.
Right.
It doesn't say four houses.
But I would assume four houses. I wouldn't assume one is deeded, and then it's a...
You're on the planning commission.
Land lot.
I understand the description of it though.
Right.
Okay.
I understand.
But do you understand, you understand how it is now?
I, I do understand.
Cool.
I'm seeing how it's read. If I wasn't on the planning commission, had to pick this up and read it, my assumption would be four, whereas three buildable, one's not buildable, and it has access, although it's a subdivision, it's not buildable.
Right, but with the 8-24 will be deeded to the town of Stratford as open space, so...
Correct. I see the attorneys look...
Moving forward in my seat, a subdivision is the division of land into three or more parts for the purposes of building, you know, or development. So the, the division is what makes it a subdivision, and it's in four pieces is the way that you should think about it as opposed to four, it's not four building lots. The largest portion of it is going to the town, but by subdivision standards, it would be into four pieces. And so four lots really means the same under the, under the statutes.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Paul Aurelia. So I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to zoning for the subdivision at 500 Peters Lane as...
No, sorry to interrupt. This is not, this is not to zoning, this is approval by the planning commission, so...
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'll restart my motion.
Sorry to interrupt you, I apologize.
Motion to recommend approval for the subdivision at 500 Peters Lane, as it is in compliance with the zoning regs of the town of Stratford and consistent with the plan of conservation and development. That approval is, should be contingent upon the developer having satisfied concerns cited by the town attorney, the conservation superintendent, and the town planner, including all of the items outlined in the town planner's report, and that is also contingent upon the 8-24 review being approved.
May I just make a correction to the motion?
Yes.
So... I think your approval states that it is consistent with the zoning regs, it is consistent with the subdivision regulations of the town of Stratford.
Okay.
And I would say which specific conditions for the record, which is like contingent upon the street tree plan to be negotiated, I mean, to be discussed with the conservation superintendent prior to development, and contingent upon successful approval of the 8-24 review application for the open space lot that will be deeded to the town of Stratford, and the trail that'll be located on the fourth lot, and contingent upon the applicant meeting all conditions of the wetlands approval permit dated December 21st, 2022, and also contingent upon the conditions that will be placed as part of the soil erosion and sediment control plan review.
So...
And the applicant must post a subdivision bond in the amount as determined by the town engineer for all site improvements. And I think these are the conditions. So now that I stated them for the record?
Yes.
You can now state your motion and say all those specified just before.
Or you could just incorporate the conditions that she's just listed, and is that everything that was in your staff report?
Yes, yeah.
We want to make sure that we can include all those things that were in your staff report.
Yeah, that was my intent.
I, I understand, absolutely. So even if we've double-counted everything that was in the staff report, plus everything that you've just said, as conditions of approval for the subdivision?
Yes.
Yes.
So essentially...
So that's your motion.
Paul, if you don't, Mr. Aurelia, if you don't mind, can you, can you redo it now that Sussman has stated it, and please mention during your motion what Sussman has stated tonight?
Okay, I'll try that again.
Thank you.
So, motion to recommend approval of the subdivision at 500 Peters Lane, as it is in compliance with subdivision regs, and consistent with the plan of conservation and development, that approval is contingent upon the developer having satisfied concerns cited by the town attorney, the conservation superintendent, and the town planner, including the items just talked about by the town planner, and, and outlined in the town planner's report, and that is also contingent upon the 8-24 review being successfully approved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved unanimously. Moving along. Approval of minutes, January 17th, 2022, meeting minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 17th meeting, Alec Vacola.
Looking for a second?
Paul Aurelia, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Item five on the agenda is the 8-24 review, town council referrals. As discussed, this is a referral by the town, by the Stratford Town Council to consider an act on a referral to the Planning Commission for the potential deeding of open space parcel and relocation of existing trail on 500 Peters Lane property. Right now, I'm just looking for a motion to open this for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make that motion.
Second, Alec Vacola.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've obviously reviewed the 500 Peters Lane at length, the subdivision. Does anybody have any questions regarding the 8-24 portion of this? Again, in regard to the 3.6 acre parcel of land that would be deeded to Stratford and the moving of the trail to give public access to this deeded land? No questions? I'm looking for a motion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the town council for the 8-24 review that involves the 2.6 acre parcel being deeded to the town.
Um, 3.6 is the usable open space, but the overall is, I think...
3.67.
9.67 is the overall lot area of the parcel. There was a mistake that I noticed in the referral, but it's just, I would just say the total lot area is 9.944 acres, but the usable portion of it is only 3.67. But we would, the whole lot will be deeded to the town of Stratford, so deeding of Lot 4 roughly 9.9 acres.
I think if you can just use the subdivision map as your guide to say that, that that's the lot, the one that's shown, as shown on the subdivision map.
Lot 4 as shown on the subdivision map is better, yeah.
Okay, we'll try that again, too. So I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the 8-24 review, the deeding of the Lot 4 on the subdivision map, and the moving of the trail to the town council.
I'm looking for a second, please.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
And the relocation of the trail as shown on the proposed subdivision map.
And the relocation of the trail as shown on the proposed subdivision map.
Thank you. I'm looking for a second.
Second, Alec Vacola.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Item six on the agenda is the erosion and sediment control plan. This is again in regards to 500 Peters Lane, soil erosion and sediment control plan review. I'm looking for a motion to open this item for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion, we open it for discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anybody have any questions for the town planner as far as the sediment control plan? Seeing none, does anybody, would anybody like to make a motion?
Okay, Paul Aurelia, I'd like to make a motion that we, we approve the submitted sediment control plan as long as the developer complies with any recommendations of the town engineer, the conservation supervisor, and the planning commission in regards to that.
Sorry. As long as the applicant adheres to the four standard conditions specified in the staff report would be important, yeah. So, because there are four standard conditions that are placed in the staff report and we can take that.
And as long as the developer adheres to the four standard positions as spelled out in the staff report.
Now looking for a second. All in favor, say aye? Aye, so moved. Item seven on the agenda, this is a bond release request. This is in regards to the request, sorry, regards to request the release of a twenty-two thousand bond and any accrued interest related to the four hundred and fifty James Farm Road subdivision. I'm looking for a motion to open this up for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make the motion to open this.
All in favor, say aye? Aye. This again relates to the four hundred and fifty James Farm Road subdivision. Would you like to say anything about this, Ms. Attala?
Sure. So, this subdivision was approved sometime in two thousand eight. And I have enclosed the approval letter for you. At that time, the applicant posted twenty-two thousand dollar bond for street survey monuments, erosion and sediment control, low man seed, galleys, gallery, trench drain, catch basin, and pipe to town catch basin or any other stormwater control method as required by town engineer, retaining wall, contingency and inflation factor, and any other items shown on the approved site plan. After that, you know, the applicant did not immediately develop these lots. And in two thousand fourteen, the state has given additional time. Not in two thousand fourteen, I think it was around two thousand eighteen. I don't know the exact timeframe, but this, previously, you know, if you don't develop a subdivision in the five-year timeframe, you're allowed to one additional extension of another five years. But for those lots that were approved closer to two thousand eight, because of the way the housing market was right after two thousand eight, they gave an additional four-year window. So, the applicant had fourteen years in total to complete this subdivision. So, they started working on it in two thousand eighteen. And although the application is on four fifty James Farm Road address, the subdivision was to split it into two lots, which is four fifty and four eighty James Farm Road. They successfully completed it by two thousand twenty and then the town engineer reviewed it for compliance with his staff report and the conditions that were placed at that time when it was approved. And I have enclosed his letter to you, which says that all his, you know, all the conditions have been met and there is no reason to continue to hold the bond for the items. So, now I request the planning commission to approve, you know, the release of the final bond along with any accrued interest. And once you approve that, I will take it forward to the finance department and make, ensure that this is, you know, released successfully.
Thank you. Any questions about this?
Yes, sometimes if they don't do the work, then the town has the bond and they won't release it. They will use it to build it on their own. But in this case, in most cases, what happens is when the inflation factor kicks in and, you know, it's not always the same amount that you estimated it to be, especially in this case because it's, you know, so long back. But it is what it is and it's been successfully done, so. That's the basic, yes. Exactly. But then, you know, for the subdivision that we reviewed today, five hundred Peters Lane, not five hundred Peters Lane, that we reviewed two, three months ago, Broadbridge Avenue, they also had a payment in lieu of open space. Because if you're, according to the subdivision regs, if you're dividing a parcel into five lots or more, you have to provide ten percent open space. But if they're not providing ten percent open space, the town can accept payment in lieu. So, there are two different terms. Bonding is for doing improvements successfully. Payment in lieu is when you cannot meet the requirements. And for, sometimes we take for sidewalks too, payments in lieu because, you know, there's no existing sidewalks nearby. So, it doesn't make sense in those cases, yes.
William Boyd, I have a question. Four fifty and four eighty are properties that have been built?
They have been built, purchased, I think, by two separate property owners. But the applicant is Manuel Martino, who wants his bond money back because he, you know, developed those. So, the bond will be for the applicant, not the addresses.
Right, so with that being said, a lot of times when they, when someone buys a property, they have situations where if this wasn't, work wasn't done, they have an issue at their homes and then they go after the bond.
No.
So, are there any complaints on record to where if we release this, they're not, it's not gonna?
Once the development has been complete and the permit has been issued.
Permit certificate.
The zoning and building permits.
Okay.
It's done business. Now, even if a homeowner comes back in two years and says whatever they did is not, you know, good enough, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't interfere with the agreement that the town has with the applicant. The applicant's job is done. The permits have been, you know, issued, so we can't do anything. So, here in this approval, you have to state for the record that you would approve the release of the bond to applicant Manuel Martino for final, for the release of the final bond and any accrued interest. Because there is some interest accrued on this money, like another three hundred dollars or something that I've seen in the financial system. So, everything will go back to the applicant, not the individual property owners.
If I might.
Please.
The, the bonding is just for sort of the public improvement parts, so it's not for the house. It would be for the drainage, for anything that would need to be done. So, you, it would never be like, oh, I got a bad roof or something like that. It would only be for, for, like if there's a roadway or, as you said, drainage or things like that. Just the public improvements. The town doesn't deal with the, the private building of the house.
Right, the reason I ask, I had a situation like that in a condo. They released a bond and what they released it on, it affected our properties and it was, it was chaotic. So, where the, where it got contentious was, was the bond, was that the builder or was it us? And it went on forever.
Right, so, sorry to interrupt, but we're just gonna stick to the, this topic in particular. And we had a memo from, a memo to Sister Smith that actually says that the town attorney's role is to sure, ensure that the public obligations are satisfied. There is no reason to continue to hold the bond for the items that were contained in the bond determination from twelve twenty-four, two thousand and eight. Therefore, unless there's any questions, I'm looking for a motion.
William Boyd, a motion to approve release of the bond?
I'm sorry.
Yes, as per the conditions for the town have been met, according.
So, our finance director wants it a certain way to reflect in the minutes. So, if you can say motion to approve the release of the bond to Mr. Manuel Martino to release a final bond amount along with any accrued interest. And that way, you know, I have it clear.
Okay, so, I file a motion, I make a motion to release the bond to Mr. Manuel Martino, Martino, according to he has met completion of the subdivision similar improvement.
I'm sorry to interrupt. The, the bond along with any accrued interest relating to four hundred and fifty Farms Road.
Yes, the bond with any accrued interest related to four fifty James Farm Road.
Paul Aurelia, I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye, so moved. Moving to item eight on the agenda, implement, implementation plans for the greenway and complete streets. Ms. Attala, is there any updates you'd like to give the group?
As of now, they're just, the consultants are working to put together the bid documents. Actually, they submitted those to DOT and, you know, waiting for DOT to approve the bid documents so that they can go out for bidding on phase one along Main Street. And phase two planning is somewhat slow at the moment, but it'll definitely pick up in spring once the phase one drawings have been finalized.
Thank you. Item nine on the agenda, plan of conservation and development, the P O C D update. If you don't mind, Sister Smith, could you give us an update?
So, I enclosed our housing workshop summary that Glenn Scholder, consultant for the P O C D, has produced. We had a successful workshop on January twenty-third with all the town boards and commission members who deal with land use matters. I'm happy to have seen all of you there and we had a quorum from all the commissions, which is, you know, really good number. And now the consultant is working on the ideas that were, you know, discussed at the workshop to produce a map of potential desirable locations for multifamily housing in the town. And once he prepares that map and shares with me, I will share with you all. And we are also almost towards the tail end of the process. We met with stakeholders in the last month. We had folks from DOT, Metro North, and Connecticut Division of Rails for our transportation discussion. Mayor Hoideck was also part of those discussions and Christian Niack, chief administrative officer who staffs the traffic authority, and, you know, other relevant town staff, like the town engineer, P N C administrator, they were all part of that discussion. It was a very successful meeting. We had folks from Metro Cog too. And then we also had a meeting with Connecticut Deep and Sustainable Connecticut and other environmental partners from the state. Again, all the relevant town staff were present for that meeting. Then we had another meeting with Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office's staff and Historic District Commission members and the town historian. And we took enough information from SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, on how to move our historic and cultural resources objectives and agenda forward. So, we have just one last meeting left with members of community resources, which is Sterling House, Y M C A, and all these local partners. That meeting is day after tomorrow. Once that's done, we have finished all the meetings that we thought we would, except for one, that the consultants are required to meet with the consultants of the other projects that the town's working on, just to, you know, share ideas and brainstorm what objectives are most feasible for the P O C D. Rory Jacobson, who is our consultant, will be working on a draft report. And she said she would start sharing it with the technical advisory committee members starting next month. And I will share those drafts by email with you all. You can review them and share your comments individually with me. And we can also discuss those at our next planning commission meeting. I think we might have to set up some additional time, I mean, set aside some additional time at our next planning commission meeting for those drafts so that you've got everything that should be included in the P O C D. And we are hopeful that by May first, we would have a final draft that can be referred to town council and Connecticut Deep and other state agencies and Metro Cog. So, there is a sixty-five day review period that kicks in after we submit officially. So, the final approval should be by the town council and the planning commission recommends an approval. I think that process will be sometime in July or August. And by August twenty-ninth, I'm hoping to have this approved because we have another deadline to meet, which is our Sustainable Connecticut recertification. And the way our P O C D document is written and the way those objectives align with the Sustainable Connecticut requirements would help us secure more points for Sustainable Connecticut's recertification. So, these both are tied together. If we don't finish the draft by August, finish adoption by August second week, then we cannot claim those points that we can, we would have been able to claim because of all the outreach and engagement we have done in the past one and a half year. So, there's a tight window of timeline. So, I know most people plan vacations in July and August. So, just giving you, you know, a big picture overview of when the final approval would be around. It may be around July, so you know.
Do you, based on F H I Studios and their feedback, do you see any issues? Do you foresee any issues of us meeting those deadlines or is this?
No.
No.
No issues.
That's good.
Quick question. What does those, what do those points give us?
So, we were silver certified last time and we are now trying to seek gold certification this time around. I, I'm gonna start working on that with other town staff now that this is going to slow down and the consultants are in the draft writing stage starting next month.
Thank you.
Anybody else, anything else on the P O C D? Item ten, new business, planning commission rules of order, last meeting we, oh, sorry. Looking for a motion to open this for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion, we open this for discussion.
Sarah, I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. So, last month, we reviewed the planning commission rules of order. There was a couple adjustments that were recommended and edited on that. We all voted for it, those who were here for that. Really just adding email along with mail. Also, firming up that if the chairman is not available for a meeting, that the vice chair would sit and preside over the meetings. I think those were the only two major changes that we made. I don't know if, we already voted on it, so I'm not sure if we have to re-vote on. What's that? Oh, this is a separate item? Do you wanna give? Okay. Item number two. Which is in regards to the chairman and vice chair, correct? So with that being said, did everybody review that? Is there any questions about it? Anybody like to make a motion?
Paul Aurelia, I'd like to make a motion that we change item two from, in the chairman's absence, the secretary shall preside pro tem, to, in the chairman's absence, the vice chairman shall preside pro tem.
Looking for a second? All in favor? Aye. With that, that's the balance of our agenda. I'm looking, no problem.
I wanted to commend Alec Ficola for finishing up all his certification hours. He has gone above and beyond the requirements of four hours of training. He, I think he has now successfully completed five and a half hours, right?
Yeah.
Yes. And I request the others also to go ahead and, you know, take those virtual trainings and log in your hours with me. Because, believe it or not, nobody knows how this particular state statute requirement would be enforced, but chances are that they may audit the commissions. We don't know how it'll go.
So with that being said, you had listed several meetings, and those were all in February.
More that'll be coming up, if you keep tracking that UConn Clear website.
Okay. I did check the calendar and it looked very light on upcoming months, so.
I'll share any other new information, too, that I get, okay.
So. Again, Sister Smith is gonna, she's gonna keep an eye on it, on that website for us and send us updates. Also, we could keep our eyes on it as well, just keep clicking. But like I said, as of right now, the calendar's very light, so hopefully they'll have more events or, you know, meetings that they provide. Unless anybody else has anything else? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Sarah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Paul Aurelia, I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, guys.